I think we could agree that all three of them don't have tremendous architectural value. We have a parking garage on the Avenue of the Arts. We have what amounts to a big box hotel on the corner of 12th and Arch. When it comes to the Convention Center, we wanted to create something at the corner of Broad and Race. It's a very expansive corner. It's visually filled with very hard surfaces between the building itself and the concrete facade. And so, to sum up, the question is, is we wanted to have properties where the UED implementation would be an enhancement to what's there.
Thank you. Councilwoman Squillen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then, I know we've been working on this for a real long time, and it's all this morning, obviously. But I think we took into consideration a lot of the concerns that everyone had along the way. And I'm under the pure belief that, you know, we don't know the key to success, but the key to failure is trying to please everyone. So, in that case, we really, really took a lot of heart and information from the Planning Commission, from the administration, from even Scenic Philadelphia and others, while we were going along this path. And again, not everybody's going to be happy, but I think we found a really, a compromise that can work. And again, this just is allowing the UEDs to be in a specific location, and then we got to go back through the process again if each one is going to be individually vetted through all these processes. So, I mean, I want to thank Thaddeus and Ron, and if Ron, if you have something to add on that, I would appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to parlay on that, that even though the Commission voted not to support it, we continue to work with the staff and work out and work through the amendments that they had recommended, continuing, as you mentioned, to this morning, adding in the requirement of the additional PennDOT approval where applicable, and then also the issue about what happens when the signs run their useful life or they are abandoned. And the concept was to use concepts already in place that are in the codes, for example, for sidewalk cafes, pedestrian bridges that project over or encroach upon the rights of way, where a bond is established in connection with an agreement that's worked out with the law department in the appropriate form and amount in the event that that would happen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilwoman Tesco?
I just have two. Would you work with the establishments to design the sign for their facility?
Yeah, in a word, yes. The way the legislation is currently structured, you have to have a minimum of three local designers, architects, involved.
That's right.
And that's for the purposes of legislation. If you look at an implementation that we would be involved in, we have a tremendous resource in the various art schools that are in this city. And I'd like to go to the art schools and get their efforts on each of the UEDs weighing in. I think it would make it a very interesting process and a very interesting outcome.
I might ask you too, the owners of the properties are also involved in the design, correct?
Yeah, the owners of the properties have ultimately the final say from the relationship between the UED developer and the property owner as to what the design is. So, I apologize if I misunderstood your question, but each of the property owners does have to sign off on the design.
And I just want to clarify the nonprofit idea, would the nonprofits throughout the city be considered, are just those nonprofits within the area where the signs would be going? Say, Center City?
Sure.
Well, let me just add in one second, I'm sorry, Councilwoman. When we first decided about the signs, my main thing with signage and then also the city's ability to maintain things that we do has been lacking. And I told Thaddeus, the only way we do this is if we're able to maintain the facilities around the area, which I called an impact fee. An impact fee was something that I felt that the people close by who have nonprofits in that area would be able to receive some of those funds in order to keep up the surrounding area who were immensely impacted by the UED. Therefore, they would be able then to clean up the streets, maybe light the streets, maybe put shrubbery or things around the areas that they needed. And so, we thought that within a certain boundary of the UED, a nonprofit in that area should be the one that would be eligible for this type of compromise. And so, we actually reached out to some of the nonprofits that were close by the sign and see if they were interested in this concept. And that's how we came up with the people who are involved. If that clarifies that. Thaddeus, if you want to add?
Thank you, Councilman. If I could just add to that to answer your question, we have two pieces to the nonprofits. We have the financial piece, which Councilwoman Squillen so eloquently outlined through a community benefits agreement of putting those money back into the nonprofits that serve the areas in the immediate vicinity of the UED. We then have the communication component, where each UED is required to have 8% of its time for a nonprofit. And to answer your question, it's our perspective that it is not the UED's developers' decision or purview to decide which nonprofit should be on which UED at what times, but rather that those UEDs have to be made available to all nonprofits for that exposure.
All nonprofits in the city or all nonprofits in the area?
The way the legislation is currently drafted, it just says all nonprofits. If council would like to amend it to be all nonprofits located in the city, I have no objection.
I think for the signage point, it's all nonprofits in the city. All nonprofits everywhere would be able to get signed time on that sign, no matter where the nonprofit is located. But the actual dollar amount was specifically for local nonprofits.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Heenan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very well thought out and delivered presentation.
Thank you.
And, you know, I think the different concept with the CBAs, you know, going to the local neighborhood group is something that at least has, I think, some of our attention. I want to circle back on the license fees. You said there was a $4,000 license fee for each of the signs, is that correct?
That's correct, and it's due payable on an annual basis.
That's an annual basis?
That's an annual basis.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Councilman, that would be addressed by a bill that would amend the licensing provisions of the code to add?
Yes, I see a lot more technical cleanup to, in additions to this bill to get where you need to go. And just another question, in, you know, just a brief cursory review of the amendment talk, well, it's probably an original bill, the enforcement of these signs by a third party, L and I, hell is that?
We've set up the provisions in a fashion that they could be done by L and I. If council wanted to see that amended, to have a third party do that at the possibly even the expense of the developer, we would be amendable to that. But the emphasis, Councilman, is, is that measuring the light, as you well know, once you figure out how it should be done, it's really not rocket science. I think the process of getting people to agreement on how it should be measured is more of the hurdle.
And what measurements to set the automatic dimming devices for the digital displays with the agreement should be. As long as it's consistent with some of the outdoor digital, outdoor advertising and accessory and non-accessory signs, that's something worth, you know, discussing as we move forward.
Yeah, and the only thing I can add to that, Councilman, is we, as a company, operate the second largest digital signage network in the region, and the provisions of .3-foot candles above ambient light levels, what we use to function on all of our displays. And we've had not only no issues with it, but we've also found that at that level, we also conform to existing municipal light spillover regulations.
And I agree, and I think that, as you well know, the measurement nationally with some of these digital displays are in nits, because having the conversion in both of them into legislation and having it at the .3 or .03 above ambient light is, I think, absolutely the way to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments?
Seeing none, thank you both very much. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Ms. Marconi? Our next panel?
John McNichol, Albert Mazeroba, and Paul Beederman.
Good, still morning, good. Good morning. Mr. McNichol, I think you will call first, so if you want to start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. It's my pleasure to be with you here. Still morning, Mr. Chairman.
Barely.
I'm John McNichol, President and CEO of the Pennsylvania Convention Center Authority. I'm here today on behalf of our Board of Directors and for myself to endorse the legislation before the committee and urge its passage. I want to thank Councilman Squillen for his hard work on the legislation and recognize that his efforts had answered a lot of questions at our board level to get us comfortable with where we are. I'll be as brief as possible, Mr. Chairman, make myself available to the committee individually or whenever it would be necessary. I'd like to go back and explain just very quickly the need that we have at the Convention Center. As you know, the Convention Center was expanded in 2011 with an investment of somewhere in the order of $789 million, Pennsylvania taxpayer dollars, that went into expanding the facility up to its current boundaries of Broad Street. That was a major public works project, actually the largest in the history of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in doing so. Believe it or not, we, the planners did not necessarily contemplate some of the needs for things like digital signing along Broad Street. So, we have this beautiful expansion and this wonderful presence on Broad Street. However, you could drive right past it and not know it was the Convention Center if you were from out of town. So, we literally had a branding need and a digital signage need there. We did have in our capital budget $950,000 to address digital signage on the facility, and we were contemplating various treatments. We had some lighting design and signage companies come in, give us some recommendations. And frankly, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, it was all fairly uninspired. Because of the setback at the front face of our building on Broad Street, anything that we were to put on the front of the building, you would likely drive by without noticing. It frankly would have been, most of the treatments that we received were fairly static. Anything that we would have done to the Broad and Race corner outside, again, would have been fairly pedestrian treatment. It would have been sort of a big pole with a big lighted sign on it. You can get somewhat creative, but you couldn't get as creative as what was brought to us by the folks at Catalyst Outdoor in their presentations. I should mention to the committee that they, we did a lot of due diligence, we, the Convention Center Authority and our board, in analyzing this from a holistic perspective about what our needs were and how we could meet those needs in the most responsible way possible. Understanding that everyone in the room here practically is a fiduciary of the taxpayers in some form or fashion, we take that charge very seriously. And to that end, the board had some requirements. One is that if we were to enter into this partnership under the UED program and allow the signage on Broad and Race, which we are inclined to do, it would give us the opportunity to first forego the expense of $950,000 of capital expense, that we could redirect to other important projects in the center. That's a key. So, right off the top, we have that savings in our quiver. That's something that I think is meaningful. In addition to that, the promise of the guarantees under the lease and rent agreements would be $150,000 minimum each year or 27% of the gross revenues generated by the signage. That's meaningful, and that would be a meaningful return on taxpayer investment back to the center for other uses. That's in addition to the nonprofit contribution that's already been discussed. We also fill a need by putting branding on the building. You'll notice that the proposed treatments and future treatments would likely have the Pennsylvania Convention Center logo or name type on the actual sign, giving us badly needed signage on Broad Street. So, that's something that's very important. The board was concerned about and got satisfaction in our discussion and in our term sheet with Catalyst, our proposed term sheet with Catalyst, content control. It's very important to us, as it would be to members of the committee and city council, that we control the content and make sure that only inappropriate content would be broadcast on that signage in front of our building. Some things that the committee may not have considered, but I'd like to offer because I think it sets us apart as a somewhat unique actor in this play, is that we have customers coming in from all over the country. They have many choices. They can choose other facilities around the country. When they choose Philadelphia over Boston or over Washington DC or Baltimore or other places, Chicago, they come with an expectation of certain amenities that a building will bring. We don't have a sufficient digital package for those customers today. We would love to be able to enhance that. It's an upsell opportunity for us. It's also becoming something of an expectation. It would be nice for Philadelphia and the Pennsylvania Convention Center to actually be the first. To Councilwoman Bass's question, I know that you noticed that it was something we'd actually have the opportunity to lead on. It would be nice for our Convention Center to lead the way and to have a unique type of branding and signage outside of the building. I think it would be a great amenity for our customers and it would be a great platform for them to see more of the center. Other distinguishing characteristics of the center, I think, that are very important, is it's an exciting alternative to the otherwise uninspired treatments that we discussed. We'll include it in our marketing materials, and we believe it'll actually draw even more customers to the center. We believe it'll raise public profile to some of what we call our gate shows, our short-term shows. So, like the Flower Show that's coming to town this week and the Auto Show. Those are public access shows, and people can buy tickets to, but you'd be surprised how many people call us and say, "When is the Flower Show?", after the fact. Just having that opportunity out front could potentially draw in ticket purchasers, which actually drive revenue for us on the food and beverage side and other opportunities. And I think it also helps to bring some public awareness to the Convention Center. A lot of folks, even city folks, may not really be familiar, if they haven't visited the center, that that's what it is. So, we want to be proud of the Pennsylvania Convention Center. We see this as a way to brand our building and to make it, you know, express, you know, the wonderful nature of what it is. The board went through a very deliberative process. I'll try and accelerate this for you, but understand that the board deliberated, two subcommittees of our Board of Directors, the Capital Improvements Committee and our Administration and Management Committee, both deliberated, both heard testimony on the matter and presentations. Catalyst was very helpful in providing that information to our board members and our committees. Both subcommittees of the board passed unanimously. Resolutions had forwarded then to the board. The board then unanimously voted to approve and empower myself as President and CEO to enter into a lease agreement, all of course contingent upon future approvals, first being city council. So, we've done an awful lot like that. I mentioned our fiduciary responsibility. At the end of the day, I'm driven by one thing. We've changed our capital program so that it's a reinvestment strategy. It's got to either save the taxpayers' money, it's got to make the taxpayers' money. And if it doesn't do those two things at the same time, then frankly, it's not a priority for us. But this is a nice way for us to work through our capital program to enhance the customer experience and grow the business at the Pennsylvania Convention Center. So, I'm proud to enthusiastically support the legislation and thank the committee for its time.
Thank you, Mr. McNichol. We're here from all three, and then we'll have questions. Mr. Mazeroba?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, I'm here as Chairman of the Reading Terminal Market Corporation. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3). Although unlike-
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, Albert Mazeroba, I'm sorry. I should have known that, right?
You know how this is. It's alcohol, man.
I'm rusty. So, I am here on twofold. One is as an affected neighbor. The sign is going to be placed on the opposite corner from the terminal. And as, you know, a neighbor, and not only a neighbor, but the terminal is probably considered a jewel of the 19th century, is the greatest tourist attraction right now in Philadelphia. Last year, we had six and a half million people through it. So, it's always very important to the terminal and its board and its merchants to understand what is going in and around us. And I think the one thing that Convention Center has proven is that you can mix the old and the new and come up with something that's much better. And again, following on many of the questions here earlier, including Councilwoman Bass, I think to be the first one into the digital age on the edge of something that goes back to, you know, the 19th century and the 1850s is just, you know, something that puts Philadelphia above and beyond every other jurisdiction. The second reason why I'm here to support this is obviously, as you see on the slides from Catalyst, we will be the beneficiary, the Reading Terminal Market Corporation, of some of the revenue that comes back as a non-for-profit. And one of the greatest challenges that we have is maintaining and operating a building that's over 150 years old. The city, under former councils, forced the Convention Center Authority in the 80s to rebuild the market. They did a great job, but that's coming on 30 years. But no one left us with a capital account. So, we kind of, you know, do the best we can. We raise some money, we borrow some money, and I think we're doing, you know, a fine job. But many of the improvements that the city and the Convention Center Authority did in the 80s are coming to end of life. So, rather than add four to five dollars a foot to the existing merchants, this would be just, you know, a godsend for us to fund our capital into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Beederman?
Thank you, Councilman Greenlee, and committee members.
A little closer to the microphone, please.
And I'm Paul Beederman, President of the Avenue of the Arts Incorporated, and it's my pleasure to be here this morning to speak on behalf of this initiative. I'd also like to mention that also who have come today is Tom Lynch, who's a former President of the Union League, Amanda Giddings, who is Sales Manager for the Capital Grill, and Tim Moyer, who is a resident at Symphony House, but also is the volunteer leader of our over 1,500 members, Friends of the Avenue of the Arts. And we're here basically today to enthusiastically support the proposal. Avenue of the Arts, Inc. has been around for 20 years, and its primary job is to work with the stakeholders of the Avenue of the Arts to focus on what we can do with our public and private partners to support the public environment and to market to drive traffic to this economic engine. The Avenue of the Arts generates well over three, I'm sorry, three-quarters of a billion dollars of economic impact annually, has over 1.1 million visitors, and its reputation you all know. Through this process of working with our stakeholders, we've really had an opportunity to do some meaningful due diligence, I think, on this project. We've had multiple discussions and presentations at our Board of Directors. We have worked with the Executive Committee of the Friends of the Avenue of the Arts, who are an all-volunteer organization of folks that live or work on the avenue. We have a monthly council meeting of stakeholders from all of the businesses and venues on the Avenue of the Arts to discuss issues that are important to the stakeholders. And obviously, this initiative has been on that agenda for quite some time, and we have reached out certainly on an individual basis to business leaders and stakeholders on the avenue to seek their opinions as well. As a result of all those discussions, our Board of Directors and the Executive Committee, the Friends of the Avenue of the Arts, are very, very optimistic and positive about approving this recommendation. We feel that it'll be additive to the whole quality and the image of the Avenue of the Arts. It'll be a revenue generator for the city. It will promote both the not-for-profits, which there are a significant number on the avenue in terms of the venues, the businesses there, but also provide a broad opportunity for other not-for-profits within the city. The funds that have been committed to the Avenue of the Arts organization to help support the public environment is a game changer. The list of things that need to be done is almost infinite, and it's always a challenge to be raising money, to figure out what the right priorities are. And to generate this money to come into the organization as a predictable, sustainable source of funds is powerful in terms of the organization to be able to do what needs to be done to maintain and enhance the safety, attractiveness, beauty of this very, very important asset for the region and the city, and to help market to support the businesses and the future development that's ongoing there. In terms of the discussion that was going on earlier around the perception and risk of having these types of things in the market generally, I would just like to point out to you that for years now, there has been the advertising cube on the Kimmel Center itself, which is lit all hours of the day and night, and there's really been nothing but positive associated with that. The opportunity here is to broaden that out. That device, for obvious reasons, is used primarily for the Kimmel Center and its events. This broadens out that opportunity to other organizations on the avenue and throughout the city to advertise and create awareness. Also, lastly, each night, every night of the week, between City Hall and Pine Street, we light every building on the avenue. And if you walk down there and you see it, it's a beautiful thing. It enhances the image and the experience. So, from my perspective, this isn't really new. And the checks and balances that are being discussed and put into place by council and the commission and the Arts Commission, all these, will assure that this thing is done with the highest level of quality. And with the involvement that we have with Catalyst Outdoor and the strength of our councils and our boards, we're comfortable that the thing's going to be executed with the highest quality possible. Lastly, we've generated, after reaching out to the 1,500 friends, we've generated about 140 letters of positive support in favor of the initiative. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Mr. Beederman, let me just start with you. You talk about what you've done, you know, between City Hall and Pine. You also include the Avenue of the Arts North, right, I assume? You involved with that, or is that a separate?
Yes, we've been-
A little more into the microphone, please.
Yes, for years, we've been involved with North Broad Street as well. But as Avenue Renaissance North forms as a separate organization, our organization becomes more focused, more exclusively on South Broad. We continue to work with the folks that are trying to get that organization built so that we can do everything we can to support its growth and its future success. And we're also continuing to work on the North Broad Street Lighting and Landscaping Initiative, which is undertaking right now. I attend regular project meetings for that and continue to support that effort. But as time goes on, and I believe focus is a good thing, that there'll be more focus and dedicated by Avenue Renaissance North to North Broad Street and the Avenue of the Arts Incorporated organization focusing on South.
Okay. The reason I raise that, you talk about, again, all the lighting you've done, and I know there's a difference of opinion on this, but I've always thought that lighting adds kind of vitality, and thus vitality adds people.
Yes.
And that's what we want, and you certainly see people, South Broad, it's still a struggle sometimes, a little bit when we go north. So, I was wondering, maybe, Mr. McNichol, you can comment as far as that kind of adding, you know, obviously the funding and the advertising, all that, but just the activity issue, if you will?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's a great point. You know, that part of the building is truly, it's fairly sterile right now. It just doesn't have a lot of accent lighting. It has street lighting, obviously, for safety and security purposes, but there's no pop to it. I mean, to, you know, to use a scientific term, right? So, when we have 235,000 people come through the Flower Show and 250-some thousand people come through the Auto Show and the whole thing, and they're working into the evening, early evening hours, I mean, just imagine how much more electric that front of the building would be than it is. We have an LED curtain wall that can give you some nice lighting and different, you know, treatments, but nothing would pop like this would pop. And I think it would also be something for a customer to come to town, they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, they ought to at least be able to see their logo in front of the building, just welcoming guests. So, if we have the nephrology convention coming in with 25,000 kidney doctors, you know, it would be nice to recognize their contribution to our economy, because they're generating on the order of $45 million in economic impact to the city. I think we, they certainly deserve to have some branding associated with it. So, I agree with you. I think it would certainly liven up our neck of the woods on Broad Street, but I think it would be done in a tasteful way and in a way that wouldn't be, you know, gaudy in any sense.
And again, that would be guided by all the various steps you have to take to finally have this approved, right?
Absolutely. And we're a very conservative board. Our board is a very conservative group by nature. I mean, we walk slowly. I mentioned that we take our responsibility to the taxpayers very seriously. So, this will be a very calculated approach, as it has been. Many, many hours and meetings have gone behind this in, from our board's involvement and our staff. So, I assure the committee that we'll continue with that due diligence and make sure we're responsible citizens.
Okay, thank you. By the way, I like the word "pop". I understand that much more than "nits" in it.
Yeah, I'm a knit-wit, I guess.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I just want to add too, I believe there's somebody here from Avenue North Renaissance, but if they're not, they were here, they sent a letter of support also, who's going to help and hopefully make North Broad Street pop a little more than it is right now. So, hopefully that'll work out.
I know the council president's been working on that app for a long time.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Heenan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony. I just want to make a few quick comments to Mr. McNichol, and I just want to congratulate and congratulate- I just want to make a few quick comments to Mr. McNichol, and I just want to congratulate you on your exemplary performance at the Convention Center as of lately in changing your strategy. I was just at a stop by a manufacturing conference that was just here last week, within the last week and a half, and, you know, 5,000 participants, over 400 vendors, and the chairperson and the executive director of that show said this is their first time here in Philadelphia, and they had such a wonderful experience that they will be back next year. So, I think your comments here and the way you've, you and your team has strategized the new tactics in the visitor and the convention center experience has been the first-class product, which we deserve as a first-class city. So, I take all what you say, you know, at the highest regard, and, you know, the proof is in the pudding, and you have certainly, you know, increased bookings, you have changed the way our labor force is produced as a team in continuity, and it's producing, you know, a lot of revenue opportunities for us. So, with that being said, I'm going to bridge into today and the UEDs here. You had mentioned in your comments and your testimony that you're going to be able to save $900,000 in capital. Can you explain a little bit on that, because I think that's great where those resources could be put to other, you know, more friendlier, well, I wouldn't say more friendlier experience, but, you know, having another experience that people who use our Convention Center will have.
Absolutely. So, we'll take and divert what we would have otherwise spent $950,000, thereabouts, on the digital signage on the front of the building. We'll be able to put that money back into our capital budget, and we'll be able to reallocate that for more important projects related to the expansion. For instance, we'll be spending $900,000 this year on high-density Wi-Fi throughout the expanded portion of the facility. Why do we have to do that? Because we're going to have the World Meeting of Families and Pope Francis coming to town. And then, we're going to back it up in 2016 with the Democratic National Convention coming to town. And so, the demands on the building are not going to get less, they're going to get significantly harder for us. But those challenges are easy challenges to face, given the fact that the business, as you mentioned, Councilman Heenan, is really on an exponential climb. We've booked since May of last year 28 new major citywide shows worth $850 million in economic impact to the region. That, we have never seen that kind of growth in the history of the Convention Center dating back to 1993. We've never seen this much interest in that facility, and we've never seen greater cooperation to a person, to an organization, from our show labor force all the way through to our convention and visitors, to our hoteliers, Reading Terminal Market, all of our partners in the region that make the Convention Center such a wonderful experience. We now have a model in place that's proven that it can work. The customer that you mentioned was Pac Expo East, came here, it's a box manufacturing, packaging convention and exhibits. Not only are they coming back, they're booked now for three more years, 17, 19, and 21. As a result, not of anything that I did, but of the team effort, it resulted in a very, very positive experience for their attendees and their exhibitors. So, I thank you for coming over and visiting that show, but understand that the economic impact of the show this year was over $25 million to the region for that show coming. We're going to take it from a two-hall show to what I believe will be a four-hall show by 2019, and they're going to be great partners with us in that.